9:40 AM, consideration of a follow-up presentation by Sonoma Clean Power Chief Executive Officer on a geothermal opportunity zone and B, consideration of a resolution establishing county membership in the Sonoma Lake Mendocino Opportunity Zone. And I believe we'll start with Carol Hutchinson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to recognize and introduce Matthew Rothstein, who's been working with Sonoma Clean Power to bring this agenda item back to your board. This is a follow-up from a discussion you had in fall 2021. So, Matthew, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Carol, and thank you, Board. As your Board will recall, on November 2, 2021, Sonoma Clean Power's Chief Executive Officer Jeff Seifers introduced the idea of cross-jurisdictional collaboration surrounding exploration of new baseload renewable energy technologies through a geothermal opportunity zone. Sonoma Clean Power's Board had authorized creation of the Geozone on October 7. Emerging technologies have the capacity to produce geothermal energy while using markedly less water than was previously required. You will be aware, baseload renewables, including traditional and new closed-loop geothermal, are also expected to be of increasing import in the state's energy portfolio as projects such as the Diablo Canyon Nuclear Power Plant are decommissioned in coming years. An estimated 1,200 megawatts of new geothermal resources are required by 2030 and 2,300 megawatts by 2045 to meet statewide preferred system plan energy portfolio goals. And this is in addition to maintaining 1,600 megawatts of current production. To lend some context to those numbers, at their peak, the Geysers produced around 1,500 megawatts. And now I'm going to display a resolution that will be for your consideration in Part B. As your Board is aware, Lake County has a 60-year history of geothermal production. We have valued long-term partners. Should your Board vote to join the Geozone, it will remain a county priority to maintain relationship and appropriate communication with existing geothermal partners. Additionally, culturally meaningful lands and our communities must be protected as any exploration is undertaken, in addition to mitigating any potential environmental concerns. In consideration of these factors, at Supervisor Pyska's thoughtful recommendation, the highlighted modifications are proposed to the resolution that was posted with your agenda.
Can you read those out loud? It's impossible to read that from the public's perspective.
So, there is a "whereas" added, which states, whereas geothermal energy production has been an essential part of the Lake County economy for 60 years, thanks to the Geysers facility. And in the final "whereas" on the first page, it now reads, whereas the County of Lake is well acquainted with the potential consequences to the environment, communities, and culturally meaningful lands of new resource development, and expects to be directly engaged in the selection of projects with the aim of mitigating adverse impacts. And then, one item has been added to the resolution content in Item 3, that states, Lake County commits in our participation in the Geozone to maintaining relationship and appropriate communication with existing geothermal industry partners. So, those are the changes that have been made. And continuing, Jeff Seifers and Ryan Tracy of Sonoma Clean Power, who have been instrumental in development of the Geozone concept, are present today. And we've asked them to be prepared to discuss what the structure of the group working on Geozone would look like and what involvement they expect from Lake County as we move forward. And Jeff and Ryan can also answer any other questions that you have. As referenced in the memo associated with this item, staff believes Lake County being involved in the Geozone and remaining aware of possibilities for new resource development will be beneficial. And Lake County will retain the authority to review any projects located in our county as they arise and weigh any risks associated with proposed activities. Now, if it pleases your Board, I will turn this presentation over to Jeff Seifers and Ryan Tracy of Sonoma Clean Power.
Thank you, Matthew, and thank you, Supervisors, for asking us to return. I think as we explore how we can best steer this wave of coming geothermal power in California, I'd like to ask Ryan Tracy to recap what's happened since we last met on November 2. And then, I'd love to dive into some of the opportunities and concerns that have been raised and make sure that we're adequately addressing those. And we do have a very short slide deck, if that's okay for us to share. Let me tee that up. Is that working?
Yes.
Okay, super. So, Ryan, maybe you could begin with the recap of kind of what's been happening over the last couple of months.
Excellent. If you don't mind, go to the next slide real quick. And Matthew actually provided a great summary. You know, it's been three months, but I just did want to add a couple of things to the Board to consider on the Geozone specifically. One of the reasons this is so important, as Matthew alluded to, is we're looking at trying to navigate the energy transition in California. We're really on the leading edge. Solar and storage, we're finding there are certain limitations, especially when you're looking at the winter time and trying to design reliability through cold and windless wells. And geothermal is an essential resource for making that work. And the state's starting to identify that. And as you heard on some of the quoted megawatts of planned capacity, we expect there to be a lot of demand in new geothermal coming down the pipe. One thing that's got us really excited is there's been a lot of technological evolution since geothermal development, what has happened in the Geysers. It really increases the flexibility of how the technology can be applied, whereas the Geysers Geo right now is located over a very unique geologic characteristic, where you not only have hot rock, but you have permeable reservoir where fluids can flow through. The new technologies that a lot of companies are offering don't require that permeability. So, it allows us to look just for hot rock. And hot rock is present over a lot more of the region than just the unique characteristics that the Geysers have. So, that not only increases the opportunities, but it increases the flexibility. So, when we're looking at trying to find places that we can put geothermal that are more compatible with the community, these new technologies really offer that advantage. And as Matthew mentioned too, the other thing that we're really keeping an eye on is that there are now technologies that make geothermal a lot more water efficient. The current Geysers facility is very dependent on imported water from both Lake County and from the City of Santa Rosa. And certainly, that type of supply is something you've got to keep an eye on with climate change and drought risk. So, these new technologies allow not only new geothermal to be more efficient with water, but allow us to look at the current operation and figure out ways to be more efficient with our water use. So, with all of this context, SCP, looking at our region, which has a world-class geothermal resource, and compared to other places in the world, just a great setting for this type of development. We really want to look for opportunities to look across the region for the communities to get together and understand and explore if there's an opportunity for us to pursue geothermal development and help contribute and take a leading role in solving this really important challenge for climate change. I can go to the next slide. Yeah? So, since we met back in November, there's a lot of valuable discussion and ideas we captured and concerns from the community. So, one focus area was understanding how we can capture those on the resolution. And Jeff's going to speak to that in just a bit. So, I'll leave that to him. But since then, we've also had the opportunity to present this collaboration to the County of Mendocino, and they approved unanimously in December to join the Geozone. And we're currently on the agenda for Sonoma joining the Geozone in February. We've also continued to really do our outreach to local experts, including people who've worked in Lake County government and that have been really involved and on the ground with historic geothermal development and understand some of the hurdles and different issues and trying to incorporate that feedback in the way that we're pursuing the Geozone. We've stayed politically engaged. We've been talking to regulators about what we've been up to and also really building our network with developers to make sure that when we start looking at partners from the private world in this initiative, that we understand the types of different technologies that can be applied and the different benefits that they can bring to the Geozone.
So, I think, maybe even before I touch on this slide in the resolution, I just wanted to acknowledge that with the CPUC's order recently to rapidly build 1,000 megawatts of new geothermal in the state, and expectations that order could expand in the future, as Matthew, rather, alluded to, we conceived of the Geozone as a way to help our region organize and determine what local counties want to see built, instead of just responding after receiving permit applications. And as we've explored this Geozone concept, to Ryan's point, we did meet with a number of people with important history and knowledge, but we're learning about more. So, some of the letters that we got in response to this item has introduced us to new names that we absolutely want to connect with and learn more from. And most notably, I think we've learned a lot about some of the problems with the older existing geothermal plants. And so, we're hopeful we can steer developers toward less impactful technologies with lower risks of seismicity, lower water use, lower visual impacts, smaller footprints. And I want to be candid, there's no way that I know of that we can prevent developers from ignoring us and the Geozone altogether and going straight to each of our counties, asking for permits. But I do think if there are ways we can lay out a welcome mat for the projects that the public prefers, that may help us get better outcomes as we move forward. So, I think some of the key things on this slide, you know, we heard the Board's concerns that we shouldn't commit to a project this early, and frankly, that makes perfect sense to me. So, we worked with your staff to revise the resolution to be clear that this is about exploring for opportunities and finding what is available. We also took your request to clarify how Lake County can retain control over projects in your jurisdiction and explored that. So, one idea at the last time we met in November was to invite Lake County onto the Sonoma Clean Power Board. And we explored that, but it actually has some downsides for Lake, I think. It would, in some ways, be one vote out of 12 for issues that might be related to Lake County. And I think it would elevate the importance of the Sonoma Clean Power Board in this process in ways that frankly, even the other two counties, Sonoma and Mendocino, may not find appropriate, given that each county wants to retain full jurisdiction over any projects in its boundaries. And it also would put whoever is sitting on the Sonoma Clean Power Board from Lake in a position of voting on efficiency programs in Mendocino County or rates in Sonoma County. And it felt awkward. So, what we'd like to do is kind of think about a solution to this and have proposed that we agree that any projects in Lake County must be specifically reviewed and approved by Lake County itself, which is just a clarification of things. But further, agree that throughout the entire feasibility process and exploration, that Lake County staff and this Board would be active participants in any Lake County projects with frequent meetings and briefings, with feedback and intelligence, and agree that any negotiations for community benefits actively involve and ultimately require the approval of Lake County for projects within Lake County. And I think we've also heard from this Board and from recently the Sierra Club Lake Group noted that when renewable energy is produced in Lake County, there's really some value in having Lake County residents and businesses able to utilize that energy and benefit from it. And we do agree with that. And it speaks to the ongoing dialogue we're having with Lake County about if and when it's in your interest to receive service from Sonoma Clean Power, or stand up your own community choice program. And we are wide open to assisting with either. So far, this Board has determined in the past that having rates out or below PGE's rates is critically important. And right now, our rates are just a hair above PGE. And so, we do expect that situation to change right around the time that PGE's most expensive power plant, the Diablo Canyon Nuclear Power Plant shuts down in 2025. And that reduces the fees that PGE places on customers entering programs like ours. And so, we want to keep that welcome out for Lake County and make sure that when it is appropriate, that we consider extending service. And if you choose to stand up your own program, we want to be there to help you do it. And I think mainly that covers the material that we had here. There are some next steps, but I think I'd be interested in hearing from the Board about questions or concerns at this point and whether we've done a good enough job in addressing them. We can also talk a bit about the rhythm of engagement, about how frequently we're meeting with staff and that sort of thing. I know Supervisor Pyska had some good comments on that between the meetings. But I think it might be good to turn it over, Matthew, to the Board, if that works for you, to check in and see. We can certainly talk more about what's coming up in the future, should Lake County vote to proceed, in terms of reaching out further to the community and to developers. And thanks for, I think somebody stopped the screen shot. Thank you. And let's check in now.
Good. Supervisor Pyska?
Great. So, thank you for kind of talking about the Sonoma Clean Power Board and explaining how you got to that. I think, you know, it was my question earlier at one of our other meetings, and I think it would be a great time for you to describe what the Geozone collaboration looks like, if we sign this resolution. Are we having meetings? Are we collaborating with other counties? Are we just sitting and waiting for Sonoma Clean Power to bring us opportunities? Can you just kind of describe that for everyone, please?
Absolutely. And this is something that needs to be flexible and evolve as this Board and the Boards of the other counties have further input. But the starting point that I'd like to propose is that we routinely meet with your staff to talk about the activities that are ongoing in terms of building a coalition and partnerships potentially with developers in terms of community outreach and that sort of thing. And then, finding opportunities probably every two to three months or so to do a quick update to the Board, again, subject to the Board saying more or less as things go on. I expect that over this calendar year, we'd have a fair bit to report in four to six months or so in terms of early identification of potential properties, in terms of potential partnerships. And so, I think that will be of significant interest. I know that Mendocino County has already adopted their resolution and is interested in a similar kind of level of engagement. And I think getting the counties together to have a conversation probably would be most fruitful when there are specific projects to discuss in terms of the relationship between who's utilizing the energy versus who's producing it and where it's located and that sort of thing. But if there's an appetite to convene the three counties earlier to talk about a vision, that would be welcome as well. So, we're happy to convene that. And I think, but starting with, you know, we routinely connect with Matthew and several staff that work with him roughly weekly and give updates on that. And I'm also happy for revisions to that plan.
Great. So, I know that you received some comments from the public with concerns about geothermal in general. And these are also concerns that I've shared with you in our other meetings. And then, you brought up today about, you know, what would be appropriate in the resource area with our existing industry, which we value our partnership and we value tremendously that the Geysers have been, you know, involved in our economy for the past 60 years. And so, certain things are appropriate in the resource area and certain things are obviously not appropriate when we go into the communities. And I think that's what our constituents are very concerned about. And we've had those conversations before, but I think this is also a good time for you to kind of discuss that.
I'm sensitive to that. And frankly, I think this is a situation where the county and the community are driving the process more than we are, in a sense. We can identify where there's a thermal opportunity, but because I live in Sonoma County and am less familiar with Lake County and because I'm not a supervisor or an active community participant in Lake County, I can't know the suitability of those sites. And so, that's where this conversation needs to go. And so, I think our job, as I see it, is to do the technical research, to speak to the experts in your region, as well as the other two counties. We're starting to see some opportunity in Sonoma Valley as well, and learn about where there's potential. And then, I think the first layer of discussion, as I am envisioning this, would be with the staff of Lake County, because they might be able to weed out sites just automatically, saying, don't even bother. Like, those three sites are just not worth doing because there's sensitive habitat, or it's too close to housing, or whatever the situation might be.
Or it's a culturally sensitive area.
Absolutely. And then, I think we come to the Board and the community after the first pass by staff and have the conversation again. And I think my hope is that we can identify sites that make sense, but it's within context. So, it's within the context of what's really honestly available in terms of, even though these are much lower water technologies for geothermal, there is still some water. And water is a pretty critical concept right now around the whole Western US, and Lake County's no exception, I'm sure. And so, being really candid about where is there genuine resource potential, not just from heat in the ground, but from the all-in proposition. And then, addressing the concerns this Board and others have raised about what are the community benefits? If there isn't a manner where Lake County residents and businesses can use the energy, then what? And I think that's a fair conversation and one that we want to help be involved with and support.
Great. So, the article in the North Bay Business Journal mentioned, there was a few items in there that raise concern with our constituents, that, you know, three-quarters of the area of our county, you were looking at opportunities. And when we've had conversations, I've asked you what areas you're looking at for opportunities. And I'm wondering if something's come up recently, if you have identified areas, or if you just want to speak to those quotes in that article.
Yeah. Sometimes it's frustrating when an article picks a few things that we say out of an hour-long conversation. So, I apologize that I didn't have better control over that. So, when we are looking at opportunities, the first pass that we have is really the history of test wells that have been drilled throughout the region. And that's the first data that we get. And so, we've pulled those well logs. We know a bit about the thermal gradients throughout a fairly large portion of Lake County and some of Mendocino and some of northeastern Sonoma County. And that is a fairly large area. That is not anything like the area that we would propose for development. I think what we need to do is have that conversation about what the appropriate properties are. We did have a first pass at looking at Lake County-owned properties. And that's an interesting conversation to have in terms of what properties you already own directly. There are a number of privately-owned sites where there is potential for geothermal outside of the traditional resource zone area. And so, I think that conversation should be had at some point. But we have no projects to propose yet. We're far from that. I think we have quite a few more conversations about where it's appropriate to look first. And we are looking outside of Lake County as well, in terms of southeastern Mendocino and northeastern Sonoma and the Sonoma Valley. And we're also frankly, separately from this effort, looking at geothermal in Nevada and elsewhere. It's not our preference to construct projects that far from home. And it's also, we have less relationship with those government entities as well. But in terms of the Geozone effort, there's a fairly big resource potential area, but then that has to get narrowed quite a bit. One of the quotes in the article that I said, but it was a little bit incomplete quote, is to use the early projects as a proving ground. And that came across pretty cavalier. And I apologize for not trying to work in the entire quote, but it was more that we believe that the early projects in very low water use in either binary or closed-loop type technology is a proving ground to the Western United States for how to have baseload renewable power. And it wasn't intended to say Lake County is a proving ground. It was intended to talk about the technology of very low-water geothermal. And I think the reason that that needs to be proven is there's only a handful of those types of facilities in the world today. And it is a somewhat experimental technology in the sense that the drilling technology used to create those wells is still fairly new. And the ability for them to be located in regions like our own is still something that we believe is correct. And the science tells us it's correct, but we still need to have a proof of concept constructed somewhere. And my hope with that effort and the Geozone broadly is to demonstrate that the extremely high water use of natural gas-fired power plants can be replaced megawatt for megawatt with a lower water-use version of geothermal. And so, greatly reducing emissions, but also reducing water use. And I think that if we can demonstrate that, that's going to have application in Southern California, throughout Nevada, and potentially more broadly around the Western US. So, that was what was meant by that in our article.
Okay. I appreciate you clarifying that. And also, in the article, you talked about how the Geozones hope to produce over 600 megawatts by expanding the Geysers' geothermal production area. And then, earlier, you mentioned with the current operations, it being more efficient. And so, I'm just wondering if you have projects that you're considering for the resource area now?
Not yet, but I do think engaging with Calpine and some of the other smaller producers in the Geysers complex area is important and for so many reasons. One is, they know a lot about geothermal. They operate facilities and they're key partners. But also, for a reason that if there is an opportunity to reduce the environmental impacts of an existing facility, that could actually be paired with the production of a new facility nearby. So, for example, and I'm not promising this because I don't know this is an opportunity, but I want to explore this opportunity. If there's a way to reduce the amount of water that an existing facility at the Geysers uses, could we use that water in a secondary site nearby to expand the amount of power output? And it's a question that I think is worth asking. I don't know if that's an opportunity, but I think we need to explore it. If there's a way to reduce the leakage of hydrogen sulfide gas or methane from the existing facility, we should explore that too, because there are some impacts from drilling a new facility. So, I think the idea of partnering with Calpine in some way, whether it's with land or existing resources, is something I'd like to keep on the table unless the Board really strongly disagrees. I think they could be a key player.
Yeah. We encourage that collaboration and cooperation because we have an existing industry. We have existing infrastructure. And so, I think that's going to be an extremely beneficial collaboration for everybody involved. So, I really appreciate you answering all my questions. I don't know if anybody else has questions.
Supervisor Spatier?
Thank you very much. Thank you for the conversation and the opportunity. Definitely want to be at the table for the discussion, rather than not being at the table at this discussion. However, there's definitely some concerns. And so, I'm glad that this is not a... However, there's definitely some concerns, and so I'm glad that this is not an approval of a project, this is approval of discussing to see what projects might be available and then coming back and seeing what that project looks like. Definitely concerned about added seismic activity, definitely concerned about added use of water. I know that not only do they receive up at the Geyser's the full-circle treated sewer water up there, but they also have a 7,500-acre feet uptake of lake water as well. And so the more we continue to experience droughts, the more that's definitely something of concern, as that would be added pressure on the resources that we have. I want to clarify something that you mentioned. It sounded like you are letting us know that it's not possible, or at this moment is not, it is not recommended to open up a seat at Sonoma Clean Power for the County of Lake. Is that just during this process? Because once there's a project, it would seem to me that it's an absolute must, from my perspective, that we have a seat at the table to decide how rates are going to be changed, how service is being provided, and that not being at the table, I don't see that as an advantage, as you painted it, but maybe I misunderstood. So wondering if you can clarify that?
So the Sonoma Clean Power, as it exists today, serves Sonoma and Mendocino Counties with power generation. And what I would like us to think about is, if, as soon as there is a body that is determining what projects to build, how to build them, what the community agreements are and so forth, I think it has to be, that body has to be the county where those projects are constructed. I don't see us forming a new entity. So the gezone, as I envision it, isn't so much creating a new government agency. It doesn't do that. There's no new JPA, there's no new decision-makers created. It is a partnership of existing agencies. So we have power provider currently of Sonoma and Mendocino, Sonoma Clean Power, and then the partners so far Mendocino County, we expect Sonoma will join, and we certainly hope Lake joins. And so three counties and a power provider. I'm wide open about a seat on the Sonoma Clean Power Board for Lake County. I don't think that serves the goal here, because Sonoma Clean Power would not be the deciding entity for determining which projects are greenlighted. It would still be Lake County that would do that for Lake County, and Mendocino for Mendocino, and so forth. So maybe what, if it's okay with the board, let's leave that conversation open. And let me come back to the Sonoma Clean Power Board and keep the conversation alive as this proceeds, so that when it gets to the point of exploring specific projects, if we see that there is a gap that needs to be, that there's some power that Sonoma Clean Power has that Lake County wishes to be involved in, let's reopen that.
And I just want to clarify, I want to clarify before we get too deep into that, and I thought I stated it and maybe I misstated it. If there is a project that occurs in Lake County, at this point is where I would assume that a seat would open up on Sonoma Clean Power for Lake County to get on, because a project already exists. Because at that point, Sonoma Clean Power would be serving Lake County. And I see that you have the City of Petaluma, the City of Rona Park, the City of Santa Rosa, Sonoma County, Mendocino County, and to not have Lake County on the board would seem to me like we're lacking a voice on what direction Sonoma Clean Power is taking to serving and providing adequate service to a community that does have a project. I don't think that, I think there has to be a project before that request is made, but I just wanted to make my point be heard, that once a project is in place, we absolutely should have a seat at the table in making sure that Sonoma Clean Power is serving this area adequately and appropriately.
Understood. And frankly, if we were serving customers with power, that would be automatic, and there would be an extension of board seats to Lake County coming with that power service. What I'm distinguishing is, if there was a geothermal project that Lake County determined was in its interest and wanted to pursue, and service from Sonoma Clean Power had not yet started to Lake County, that might be a situation that we want to revisit the board seat on and see if Lake County still has an interest in being on the board in that situation, or just overseeing the project. Did that make sense?
Yes.
So in other words, I'm 100% clear that if we're serving power to Lake County, you're on my board. There's no question of that. And I would like to do that. I think that is partly a rates question, too. And so, or at least it has been in the past.
And I hope that when projects are brought to the County of Lake, that it's very evident if power will be provided to Lake County residents, or if it's simply a facility to provide more power, to provide power to your current customers. I think that's going to be an important part of the discussion during the approval process.
Excellent. Understood.
Yes.
Supervisor Simon?
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation today. Appreciate you coming back and looking at the resolution. You keep, one of your biggest conversations you keep bringing up or your topics is the use of water. And it's a little hard for me to wrap my head around, because we're not going to be, we're going to be supporting our partners at Calpine, which have been a great partner here in Lake County, well over 300 jobs, you know, here in the local area, very well-paying jobs, and they have been here for the last 60 years. But any exploration in geothermal, whether it's a better system or more new evolved technology, is going to require more water, correct?
Each site would require some amount of water. The closed-loop technologies can be dramatically lower than the existing Geyser's-type technology.
That's not, that's, my point was, we have the existing geothermal fields here and the properties running and using water, which is stated by Supervisor Sabatier. So now if we add another project, even with the new technology and the closed-loop system somewhere else, it's going to increase the water use above and beyond the current Calpine Geyser's use that is currently happening at this point. No matter what, it's going to need water.
Potentially, yes. Unless we can reduce the amount of water the current facility uses and use that in a new way.
Which I think is a great point. Obviously partnering with Calpine, who is a good partner of the county, they've been here for a long time, is having those conversations, I think, is real important. As I sit here on the board and we talk about these, appreciate, we have geothermal. Myself, I think that we should be looking at other diversification energy projects here in Lake County. There's the flash program that's potentially being talked about in Hidden Valley. Yes, that is water use, but it's a continual loop process, but also addresses fire concerns in that area, I think, in the long-term deal. Also produces energy without things. And I think for myself, we have the Geyser's in the area here, we have our geothermal partners. I think that we should look at different geotherm, or different energy options. Bioenergy, I think is something really good, the biochar facilities, other things like that, which are attempting to come into the county, I think that technology is important. Very minimal water use on those industries, you know, as we move forward. So solar, wind, and bioenergy, I think needs to be that. I understand the CPUC is talking about enhancing geothermal here in Lake County, and I've always thought, it just doesn't make sense to me, as a customer of PG&E here in Lake County, why our energy is produced here in Lake County, but we don't get to benefit any of it from the geothermal. I think our conversation should be with our partner that is here, how do we keep that energy in Lake County, and how do we form that from our own side for a Lake County utility that is buying from geothermal, instead of building something new? So those are some of my thoughts, and so I guess in my comments, we get, you know, at this time, I'm not in favor of moving forward the resolution to explore the geozones. I just, I think we have what we need, and we should go in a different direction. But greatly appreciate the presentation, and obviously it's a vote of the board, so, but I just want to lay it out there on what my thoughts are when we talk about alternative energy options here in Lake County. Because I think there are so many, and we have a great partner in our geothermal opportunities that are here now, so that's where I'm at.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I did miss one point. I wanted to ask, you haven't spoken about something that is definitely, our air quality district does a lot of work with our current Geyser's to test and check in on hydrogen sulfide emissions. Just wondering what the new technology offers and how much more we should expect on a per-project basis. I know you don't have the specific details, but that's something of concern to me. We have a very clean air here, we take pride in that, and that's just a potential emission that we do not want to see getting, having a larger and larger presence in our air here.
Yeah, we've met with some of the air districts already, and there's more to meet with, but we've met one of the experts, Barbara Lee, who oversaw some of the permitting in the northern Sonoma County Air Pollution Control District, which also was hired by some other regions in the Geyser's complex to oversee air pollution permits there. And the good news about the new technology is because they're closed-loop and you're capturing the steam and then condensing it, you're also capturing any gases and reinjecting it into the ground. And so from an operational standpoint, there can be little to no hydrogen sulfide gas emissions or leaked natural methane, but there is some emissions during the construction phase. And so those have to be appropriately mitigated, so that you don't have any unnecessary leakage during construction. And so it can be dramatically lower than the open-style systems that have cooling towers like at the Geyser's complex today. So there's a good news about that, and I hope that we can find technologies where the construction phase itself is actually radically lower as well.
Thank you for that. And I just wanted to add that on top of the other concerns that I have as we move forward and look at potential projects, that's one of those concerns I wanted to add in and discuss. So thank you.
Chair Crandall, do you have any comments or questions on this item?
No, just that I, you know, would like to see a lot more solidified benefits and assurances to Lake County before moving forward, but we'll see how the board goes about it and see how the public feels.
And I'd have to say, I agree with that. I think I was under the idea that we were going to be producing energy and it was going to benefit Lake County. I would love to see, we have a couple of different projects that are coming in, producing energy, and it's benefiting Lake County. I really think those are the projects that we need to be looking for. I think for too many years, people have taken from Lake County, and we've just put our hands up, and I think no more. I don't think this board is willing to do that. We need to make sure that we're protecting what we have here and providing to our residents. With that, I will open it up to public comment. Is there anybody in the boardroom wishing to ask a question or make a comment?
Do you mind if I just add one more thing? And I apologize. I just want to, I think that this is only a discussion, which could potentially lead to an outcome that we don't agree with, or an outcome that we do agree on. So I think the discussion still has merit, but we do need, I think we're all on the same page, that if it's not going to benefit, if all it does is take resources out of Lake County and provide resources to another county, that's not necessarily something that I'm going to be very excited about. I know it does have the potential to create jobs, but there has to be a limit of how much we create that only benefits those outside of the area, I think we need to look at. And I think Supervisor Simon was hitting on it a little bit closer to the idea of energy independence here locally, rather than continuing to be dependent on someone else to control our outcomes, on access to energy. So just wanted to put that there.
Great. And then to the boardroom, is there anybody in the boardroom wishing to ask a question or make a comment on this item? Seeing no movement, then I will go to the Zoom room, and it looks like we have phone 4627. If you could start with your name, and you have three minutes.
Good morning. Tom Slate again. All I know about this is what I read in the agenda, and so to emphasize, I'm just skeptical, I don't know. But some points have been raised, thanks to Supervisor Bruno, that apparently, which is what I thought all along, that the Geyser's is being supplemented with water from our lake. I think that is not widely known, it's not, a lot of people don't talk about it or know about it, so thank you for pointing that out. And Supervisor Moke, when you were talking about the same thing about water, and this person responded that might potentially reuse water. Well, I don't, if you have hot rocks with that word, that's been used, how can you not use more water? And I'm quite familiar with how those plants work, and so I'm wondering, would these be new plants? Because those, the other plants use cooling towers to cool the water through evaporation because the turbine condenser operates in a vacuum. And those cooling towers dissipate a huge amount of heat, and I don't know, I don't expect an answer today, but what kind of a device, heat exchanger could replace a cooling tower? Which makes me wonder that maybe this isn't for the current Geyser's, maybe new plants. So that is a concern. Is this about new projects? I don't know. But anyway, this whole idea of water seems to me is, like several supervisors have already read, seems to be something of major concern. And so thank you for listening, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else in the Zoom room wishing to make a comment or ask a question on this topic? Seeing none, then I'll bring it. Oh, sorry, Matthew.
Anita Grant had her hand raised, first county county.
Anita.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick clarification question. Throughout the resolution, there's a reference to the counties. The counties includes what? Is this the geothermal zone that the county would be, the opportunity zone that the county would be participating in? The reason I'm asking is that the purpose is to facilitate the use of renewable energy output by customers in the counties. Activities shall not include any final commitment to develop geothermal energy resources at any site, which shall only be made by the counties. So that decision isn't solely Lake County. It does say that Lake County retains its right to review and approve any project within its jurisdiction that's essentially permitting. So I'm just wondering how counties is intended here. You might want a little clarification in the resolution.
And I know that at the top, it talks about the three counties and ends with counties, but it does not say, like I've seen in other contracts, now known as counties, so that when we do say counties, it represents that. But it would be nice to hear from maybe Mr. Rothstein on if that is what counties represents on that.
I'd be interested in what Sonoma Clean Power has to say about that, but my assumption in references to counties was that it would be the counties that were, that had adopted resolutions to be participants in the gezone, which at present would be comprised of Mendocino County only. And if your board chooses to adopt the resolution, Lake County would join those, and Sonoma Clean Power is expected to consider joining the gezone in February. But I'll yield to Sonoma Clean Power if they have any further information.
That's accurate. Yes.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
People in my profession have jobs because of assumptions other people make. I would just clarify it. As Supervisor Sabatier said, it's just easy, you put in perenns counties, here and after counties in quotations, at the first opportunity in the resolution, so that it's clear. Because again, it does say, though this is to me less clear, that activities shall not include any final commitment, which shall only be made by the counties. So I'm assuming that's just to go forward. Again, I'm just seeking clarification, so your board knows exactly what you're agreeing to should you decide to adopt this resolution today. Obviously, if you're not prepared to do that today, then this has no moment.
And I'm comfortable with that change and the way that it's written, as we still have the capability to approve or deny projects based on the project itself, too.
I'm comfortable with that change, too. I just, I wanted to get your thoughts on the amendments that I made, that really, okay, got your thumbs up. I admit Sonoma Clean Power. I know it was like, it was a last-minute change, but, you know, we really need to recognize the relationship we have for the last 60 years with the Geyser's, and that our, we have highly culturally sensitive lands, and that needs to be included with environmental... culturally sensitive lands and that needs to be included with environmental and community concerns as well.
Okay.
I'm good with those changes if it passes, but I've made my, I've made my statement where I stand.
Okay. Looking for action.
I'll offer the resolution as amended with the comments from our county council and the, and the changes made yesterday.
Resolution's been offered. Johanna, please call roll.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
No.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
No.
Supervisor Pricebom?
Yes.
And Supervisor Scott?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we were, we'll take a 10-minute break. We'll come back at...
It didn't.
No, it failed.
It failed.
It failed.
Yeah.
Failed. So we'll come back at 11:15 and then we're going to take up item 6.4.